Oh, that's a great idea.
I need four headlines you can't put on the front page.
All right, we're gonna call this uh city council workshop meeting to order. It is uh 5:00 PM. So uh looks like we've got uh Councilman Hancock absent today. We'll go into our budget workshop.
All right, Brittany. Let's walk 'em through it and open the gates up for direction as we plan for this tax rate.
I thought she was leaving.
Honestly, I wouldn't blame her. I've had enough.
Okay. Get my papers over here so I can make notes. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Okay. So, a couple of these slides you've already seen, kinda recycled and I've added some more. Again, our budget priorities were personnel, maintaining infrastructure, and some capital purchases. I've updated the sales tax as of what we've received to date. There's only one month left in this fiscal year that we haven't received and the auditor's usually booked back the first month we get in the new fiscal year. So as of right now, the last two months, we had a significant decrease in sales tax. Which you can see in the far right column at the bottom.
I think we point this out because when we spoke to you in June, we were working off the assumption from that October through June numbers. And then when we saw July skid in and then August come in even lower, we started to kinda change the way we looked at the budget. And I just, I think it's worth offering that we build this budget and then we, we get a tax rate that supports the budget. We don't start with a tax rate and build a budget that supports it. So, tonight, today, and she's gonna ask you later in this presentation, we need to know where you wanna land on that tax rate so we can make any changes that you wanna make. But, part of the things that we didn't, some things that have changed since the last time we were in front of you, the biggest thing is this is our largest revenue source at, in your entire budget. And you can see the volatility on there. Uh, we're watching those things go down. I, I don't expect it to turn back up. And so, we're holding the line on what we budgeted on sales tax and we were hoping to increase it. So.
So again, we are doing tiered color raises, so 4%, 3%, or 2% based on what your wages are. In this budget that you were presented in July, it also includes two new positions, a code enforcement officer and a parks maintenance worker.
And we learned today that the county will be proposing, the county's proposing 6% adjustments for their pay and the City of Wharton is proposing, did you have that number? I have it. I think it's 3%. Across the board. 3% across the board.
Okay, this is our tax rates. So you've seen our tax rates. This time I added in our maintenance and operating and our INS, which is our debt rate. I want to point out your debt rate. If you look from 15 years ago, we were at .05526. This year, we're at .16806. That takes away from our maintenance and operating rate. So that is less property tax going to help fund the city. That is also why the budget that we presented in July needs a tax rate higher than your no new revenue rate. There's a visual graph in case you're a visual person. So the blue line at the top is our total tax radar that you have every year. The red line is our maintenance and operating rate. And the bottom line in green is our debt rate, the INS rate. And you can see how one's going up and the other's coming down. Sorry, this is really little. So this is typically in your budget. It's a little different online this year. I just put it in here for familiar, familiar views. Right now, your no new revenue rate, the value of a penny is eighty-eight thousand dollars. Eighty-eight thousand twenty-one dollars.
Do you wanna point out the change in taxable value versus the two years before?
Yes. So if you look at the second line, the second row down, last year, we had 11.74% increase in our values. This year, we're at .71 of a percent.
Kaylee, could you enlarge that a little bit? Us old people, it's hard to see.
I'm sorry.
I know, it's really little, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you're gonna... She might be able to walk you through some of this as we move further in the presentation.
Okay.
Councilmember Hodges. Or, and, and, and she's about to pause and ask you to, to engage.
Yeah.
Was that, no, yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
I can see it now.
One or two.
I was struggling myself.
Lord.
So, the no new revenue tax rate is .44066. Last year, it was .44421.
Just to confirm, so that eight hundred and eighty million dollars is what the CAD gave you?
Correct.
So last year, it went up 12% and this year, they couldn't even get to 1%?
Correct.
We believe that?
I have to.
Yeah.
So we had six million dollars, we're up six and a quarter million dollars, oh, six sixty.
What did you project in that?
We weren't, um, we, we, when we do, when we issue our debt, it's around 10%. But as we were building this budget, we, we held it thinking it would, we'd have some...
Eighty-seven-four?
Yeah.
It's eight point seven million in new taxable. So...
Does that include increases in value as well, assume so, or that's new?
It does.
Oh, that's, so that's, ooh.
Yeah.
So they're just saying that our whole town,
Went up.
That's new and it only went up?
Yes.
The only reason it's hard for me to believe is nobody's come back from the CAD going, "My God."
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know?
Oh, it, it let me. Did it jump too many? Okay. The next important thing to focus on is our debt payments. So we issued a very substantial amount of debt this past year that we will make our first payment in fiscal year 25. That includes the town and country, that is general fund debt, and it includes North and South Wharton sewer, that is utility fund debt. This is part of why your interest in the INS rate for your debt went up so much for your tax rate.
But I mean, I think there's good news when you look at this chart.
It tapers off.
Because there's, there's some consistency in 25, 26, 27. And then you start to see it, instead of it just climbing, 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 and then you coming off the cliff.
But that's only if we don't issue any other debt and we don't do any improvements or any new, anything new. That's, that's just existing.
That's right.
Correct.
And here we are talking about doing something with the Public Works Building.
Yeah. So we, we, that, that will have to be part of the conversation as to when you wanna pull the trigger on that, exactly. Because it will affect these numbers.
So, our questions are, looking at this, with our tax rate, we built this budget around the needs that were provided to us when we met with the departments. We didn't have tax values, we didn't have rates, we didn't have property values. Um, so we built it around what our needs were. We want to see where council stands, how you want us to proceed. Do we need to take needs out of the budget to keep it at the no new revenue rate? Um, and start making revisions, or do we want to proceed with an increase in the tax rate?
My question is, do we really need those two new positions?
I will absolutely let the department heads come up here and, there's two of them. Crystal, if you wanna explain why we have, we have requested the code enforcement position. Kevin, you've asked for the parks maintenance worker for five years. I've failed to include it because I didn't think we could afford it. Uh, so I, I put it in there this year and I'll, I'll let you both uh let 'em know why.
The reason I ask, cause if I'm gonna vote on a tax increase, I can't see adding positions.
Yeah.
Um, so we're actually looking at the additional person so that we have one person that's dedicated to code enforcement. Um, some of the reasons that we're looking at that is that we are at least two plus weeks behind on any calls that we get for stuff. Um, and our team wears multiple hats, so our code enforcement people also do other jobs. And so they're inspecting your new construction, they're meeting with your property owners when they wanna do fences, they're doing consultations when they wanna do roofs, making sure we're getting the right permits. Um, they also do your plan reviews, so when we get new development projects, they're looking at those plans and they are making sure that they meet our building standards and our codes. And so they're not just dedicated to code enforcement. Um, and having one person dedicated to that would help us to take care of the day-to-day code cases 'cause a lot of the cases that these guys are working on are cases that haven't been touched in maybe ten, fifteen, twenty years with your dangerous buildings. And, and we've accomplished a lot of demolitions this year, but it takes three months plus for these guys to get those cases through. So having someone that we could dedicate to it would help alleviate some of those other issues a lot faster. So, if, if you're open to it, we would love it. If not, we just need to keep in mind that we're gonna have weedy lots, we're gonna have piles of trash, and we're gonna have buildings that aren't well-maintained. And it just is what it is and we'll get to it when we get to it. So as long as, as you guys know, we can't do all of it and make it right right now. Um, and you're open to giving us some leeway in trying to make some of that stuff happen, then we can, we can live without one. Uh, but if you want us to have a bigger impact on getting the town cleaned up, we would need at least one person dedicated. And it does take an entire year to train that person and get them certified so that we can get them out there. So.
Next question is, what's the salary with benefits?
The code enforcement worker, if we brought them in at the bottom, which is what we budgeted with benefits, is fifty-six thousand two thirty-nine and fifty-two cents.
That doesn't include health insurance.
That's, that don't include health insurance?
No.
It does include retirement?
Yes, it includes all the, yeah.
And...
So what would you think, sixty-five, another thousand dollars a month, two thousand dollars a month?
No, you're running it right at five, right?
Uh, about six hundred a month.
Yeah, five thousand.
Five thousand more, that'd be sixty-one thousand, somewhere in that range.
Yeah. All right, Kevin.
Just a com, just a comment. Mr. Hodges is, codes without enforcement is no code at all.
Yeah.
My opinion. But, and, and, it's just a comment.
And to pair it that, it depends on what you wanna look at. Uh, same thing with parks, the quality of life that we have with our parks is what people see when they drive through our town. We've had a huge backlog just trying to keep up with that. There's, there's actually five full-time employees that are on Parks and Grounds that take care of landscaping, not just the parks, but we also, that department takes care of the Aquatic Center, City Hall Service Center, the police range, the fire and range, the overpasses, the gateways coming into town. That's a hundred and fifty-eight and some change acres that these five guys have been trying to take care of for the past five or six years. And they, we've increased their workload specifically because it has to be. If you wanna look at that, that's the way it is. They're getting worn out. A lot of our earlier losses were due to them. They've just wore out.
What do you mean losses, Kevin?
Uh, moving on.
Okay.
Finding another job somewhere. And we finally kept some decent and trained them to this point to where they can go out and start taking care of it. A lot of people think, "Oh, you're just wheat eating and mowing." It's a lot more than that. There's a lot of the landscaping that has to be done. A lot of that dedicated time to make things look like we're presentable, you know? Company comes to our town, we want them to see our best, that quality of life. You know, same reason you brush your hair in the morning, 'cause you want to know what people want you to look like. That's our parks. That's, that's, that's cutting our hair and...
So you say they're maxed right now. Are you paying them overtime or are they doing that, you argue that?
We're, we're having to. We have no choice.
So that's what, that's my question. Can we offset this new person with what we're gonna save in overtime?
They're already, they're already overtaxed. Highly possible, but at the same time, it's very difficult because we also, at the same time, we kinda help pick up the other slacks.
Yeah.
The, the, the weedy lots.
Cause if we're paying time and a half for overtime, it doesn't take that much to do a salary.
It's true. Very true.
That's what I was just trying to get to.
Oh yeah, I agree.
When, when you say you're taking care of weed lots, you're saying weed lots not owned by the city?
That's right.
If we're leaning these people anyway, is it cheaper to use our own?
That's completely separate though, but the workload is still on, at the end of the day, they, they finish this job, then they go out and do it.
I understand, but if we're taking, if we're placing a lean on them anyway, is it more cost efficient to hire that out?
We've tried to.
We've tried that, the problem was...
Couldn't find anybody to take it on.
They, they got to be where we were getting more complaints 'cause nothing was getting done. Nobody was bidding on them or bidding to a point where no, they weren't doing them. They were waiting until a bunch of them got together, which got us in this original, where we are now creating the weedy lot task force. The guys are going out every day after work. They come in, pick them up, they get the list from code enforcement. And these same guys that are working nine-hour days are putting in another two or three hours. That's, that's where we get to that point. Uh, sometimes they just need a little bit of extra.
So they're working nine hours and they're paid overtime after eight?
Yeah, but that comes out.
After nine, because they're on a flex schedule.
Yes.
Okay.
If you don't mind me also adding, like to answer your question, it's an added expense for us to pay someone else funds to mow, 'cause we've talked about trying to, you know, support his team and alleviate that. But his team is already budgeted for, so it's, it's part of what you guys are paying for. But if we go and pay someone else to do it, it's an added expense and then it gets leaned and we may never get that fund back. Um, and so this way, it's built into the budget through his team.
And that has started to come back with people realizing and starting to pay those.
One more question. So this salary, is this, is this hiring someone that has no experience, doesn't have a resume, and we have to train for a year to get him started?
For which one?
Code enforcement.
For code enforcement, sorry.
Um, potentially, yes. We might be able to find somebody that has it. Uh, but if not, we could train them for a year and then get them certified. It doesn't mean that they can't do the job. Um, we could still let them go out on their own, but their case management would be supervised by our team.
And on the park side, all I need is attitude, innovation, and motivation.
Brittany, you have the total cost on the parks maintenance worker.
Uh, the parks worker is forty-four thousand one thirty-seven twenty-four plus another five thousand for health insurance, so hopefully forty-nine to fifty thousand.
Well, I'd like to add something on all that, uh, you know, appreciate everybody's questions, everybody's input on it. We have, uh, you know, uh, we're here to help make decisions and get things done on this council. And, uh, you know, it's, uh, we're, we're trying to move forward, we're not trying to move backwards. Uh, I know, uh, my personal opinion, it looks like, um, we need, uh, help in these two departments here to get things done. And, uh, we just have to, uh, you know, that, that's why we're here on council. We're trying to do better for the city. We're trying to do the right thing. Uh, we're trying to get things done. We're not trying to go backward, we're trying to go forward. I know it's, uh, it's, um, easier said than done, but you know, I, I feel, uh, I'd like to see, you know, council move forward and support this, uh, being that we're trying to do the best thing we can for our city. Uh, we need everybody's support and, uh, I understand if, you know, you're against it or whatever, but, uh, I feel like, uh, all of us need to work together on this and try to get this, uh, accomplished and try to get this done.
Kevin, I have a question. I'm really struggling with this cleaning of weed lots. How much of a time do you think your people devote to non-city property? And the reason I ask is...
And it comes in spurts because, uh, like recent, take last year in effect, we had a drought, so it wasn't an issue. This year, combine it with...
Everything's grown up, yeah.
It's, they're, they're growing two inches a day. And people are just not taking care of it. They're getting the letters to, to maintain your lots, you know, we want people to look at our community the way it is. So it, it, it goes back and forth, but we'll take two guys and two mowers and sometimes we have to use the, the skid steer with the mower attachment, depends on how bad it is. Especially if some of the weeds have gotten like this, 'cause after they send the letters out, nobody takes care of it, that grass that was twelve inches tall is now four and a half foot tall. Uh, so that takes a little bit more time, but it's still, that one is all one hundred percent amortized, how much the equipment costs, the, the, even the trucks to take them out there. We put that on lean towards that invoice, towards that property.
I lost my turnip tongue, you want a second?
No.
Don't you read your handout? If, if you didn't have to clean up or maintain non-city-owned property, is this person still extremely important to you? Do you have to have a, here's where I'm struggling. It's hard for me to swallow everybody in the city paying for people to clean it up. I, I don't like that at all.
Well, that, and, and it's actually separate because it's, it's taken out of that, it's not out of the budget, it's taken out of what they collect from that property owner. Cause they'll get an invoice and that's something we've actually worked on, to try to figure out how to, 'cause we're not cheap, we don't wanna be. We're not there as a yard service. We don't wanna compete with yard services. We, we wanna be able to just take it down so they understand that that nuisance, which is a nuisance, anytime grass gets that high, you're creating harborage for rats, which creates snakes, which create bugs. The whole same. So, so that whole thing is actually separate from the day-to-day operation.
Yeah, it's after hours.
It's all after.
So what, what they're doing while they're working in the parks department is just parks work.
Just parks, yeah.
And I think, to your point, if we add this worker, then that load, the parks could, would look better because you'd be able to have a, a, an additional person in the, the cycle to get those, those parks mowed.
Very true.
Uh, weed-eated. And if you've seen some of our parks, there's, there's some work to be done.
There's a lot.
Uh, and so that's the intent. Now, they're burning out because they're, they're mowing lots. I don't know that there's necessarily...
Not just the parks department, it's all departments have that.
If they weren't mowing the lots, they, they, would they, would they be, would there, would five be enough? I, I don't think the answer to that right now is yes. Because you've asked me for five years for this position. Because we, we added a park in 2015, Legacy Park, and we never added a position. And so, once we did that, we kinda jumped off. There was like this, we will add it, we will add it, we will add it, and we never added it.
At that same time, we also added the overpasses.
Yeah.
Which is an incredible load. It takes a lot of time to do the overpasses.
I'd like to say something about, about that also. Uh, if you, if anybody's been around town, out, coming into town, the overpasses, and everything, just what Kevin's saying right now, if, if anybody's been around, they've seen that here lately, it's been wet, it's been raining, the grass is extremely high. Uh, I parked on the side the other day and watched our guys coming into town, cutting the grass over at them overpasses. And the grass was really big, um, lots of wear and tear on our equipment. And that's, that's what I was worried about. I mean, you know, it's, a lot of wear and tear on our equipment, you know, not enough people to get around and get all this done, you know? Uh, like, like I said, like I mentioned earlier, uh, we're trying to move forward, not backward. It's, uh, you know...
Why don't text out paper that?
That's a good question.
Well, that was a agreement, uh, I forget when, when Mindy was still here.
Green Ribbon Project.
Yes, they gave it to us.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, as long as we took care of it.
What does giving it to us mean?
Well, that means they landscaped it, they planted those trees, and then they gave it to the city.
Why'd we want it?
Can we give it back?
That's right. That's the next question.
Okay, we'll ask.
If, if you don't mind...
What's their mowing schedule, twice a year?
Maybe three times, but mostly twice a year. And they will not mow between March and May.
What was driving us at the time? Does anybody remember why?
There was a landscaping project. They planted a bunch of roses and had the, uh, it was an entryway project.
Grab the ownership?
The entrance ways, making all the...
Oh, just making the entrance to the community look better?
Right.
Okay, okay, I got it.
And it, and it's a very important part. I have to agree.
Yeah, yeah.
Honestly, even if, if they took, did something with the one of 163 off of Laxus Street, that would benefit the citizens because you don't have to look at all these trash trees
Right.
and that pampas grass full of vines.
At this point, we're just recommending putting in grass and trees because we don't wanna maintain it, anything. We're not signing up for roses or bushes or anything decorative.
Sure.
Because we just don't have, we, we don't have the resources to do that.
Sure.
So, so this is just rudimentary. If we bring these two people on, or we agree to hire these two people, it's gonna raise, we're gonna have to raise the tax rate, right?
Correct.
So that's, that's what...
They're for two people?
That's, yeah.
Two people.
You're rating it for debt, aren't you?
That's not just...
No, the debt's already been added.
One, one point two seven cents, according to my calculation, is what it's gonna cost to hire these two people.
Right.
If it's eighty-eight thousand dollars a penny.
I hear, I mean, I don't want us to get bogged down on two people and two cents. I mean, I'm not sure with the increased sal, I mean, with the increased sales tax revenue that we've had, the increased fund balance. My, my only thing is, is I, I've tried to look at the budget, I've tried to understand things. Our, our fund balance has increased almost a hundred percent. So that means we've been taking in more money and, and not spending it. That's a challenge. We've raised salaries significantly on the top seven people. And I can provide that for you and show you compared to the, the bottom folks. So we wanna add these two people and they're critical. We're not gonna really see tremendous, you know, results of the code person for a year. What's gonna be this situation next year? We're gonna need another three people, we're gonna need another three people. But my concern is, we, our budget's increased. I'm not sure funds are being allocated to where they need to be. And that's not my responsibility as a, a council member. I'm a representative. That's staff to do. And one of the concerns that I brought up with Brittany and Courtney was very simply, we're still allocating four hundred thousand dollars for roads. That's why your roads are terrible, is because we're getting less buying power. Things are up fifty, sixty, seventy, sometimes a hundred percent. So we're getting half the money, or we're getting the same amount of money, but we're getting half the work and we're getting further and further behind. What I don't want to do is say, "Yes, I'll agree to forty-eight cents. We're gonna give you guys everything that you need, we're gonna support you." And then next year, we're, "Well, we need another person to clean up the town, and we need another person to mow, and we need four more people to work on, and the roads aren't getting done," or whatever. We've got to start showing where the money's going. The other thing is the debt. We've issued so much debt, but we haven't spent it. It's been three years on that water ta, water well and the storage tank. That money needs to be spent. That's, that's not a good look. We're issuing debt, we're paying for it, the taxpayers are paying for it, but they don't have an asset or an improvement that they, that they're paying for. You wouldn't do that at your home. So I just think we just need to take a look back and make sure if we're gonna do something, we've gotta see some results. I mean, that, that's, I, I agree with you, Mayor Bustamante, we've gotta make progress, but I'm not gonna get bogged down on two cents. I wanna know that we're gonna get things done. I listen to people on all sides of this town. And they don't feel like they're getting their bang for their buck. And then when I dive into the numbers, and I, and I'm a numbers person, when I see where the salaries are being allocated, I ask the question of, if I, we've given these folks more money, why aren't we getting more for it? That's all.
Well, I would, I would, I would argue with you there. I think you're getting a lot of bang for your buck, and I think we've done a lot of things. And in the three years since we issued that issue and T's referencing, we've spent it with the majority of the time at TCQ's desk. And so, engineering plans take time, buying property takes time. I've explained this to you over and over again. It, it doesn't happen overnight when you're digging a well from nineteen fifty-one. So, we've been working towards that, and I think if the citizens aren't seeing what we're doing, they're not paying attention. We replaced a hundred-year-old water line this year. We have a seventy-year-old water line that rotted and fell apart on... We have a seventy-year-old water line that rotted and fell apart on South Wharton and another one on North Wharton. We quickly activated and got that thing running and up and operational without any disruptions to service. So we're doing things, but what we're doing is taking care of what we have not taken care of before, and that's, some of those things you just don't see, we're not building new parks, we're not building new buildings, but we're taking care of what we have. And I admire this council because you, you've made the hard decision to issue debt to do projects like Town and Country that would've cost you a lot less to do ten or fifteen years ago when it was originally presented to you. And, but those debts come at a cost, and that's what that is. And the other thing that I wanna caution you about is if you get that M and O rate too low, you're setting yourself up next year for something else. Because the lower that rate goes, the harder it is to recapture it. When you set your tax rate, your next year's rate is based off of that, and that's what got us this year. Was that our no new revenue rate set off of what we generated last year, and because of that and the debt, you've got, you, look at the difference on that M and O in twenty twenty-four versus twenty-two thousand nine, or when I picked it up in twenty nineteen. I mean, we, we're definitely doing more with less money, because it's all pushed to the debt side. So, we're, we're doing that, but we've also, we've also been successful about grants, we have twenty-five million dollars in active grants right now. So we're making it happen, it's slow, I know it's hard to see sometimes when you're, when you're, when you're doing things like replacing water and sewer lines and, and, and re, uh, maintaining the streets. But the reason we're asking for these two positions is because we've heard over and over again that you don't enforce the codes, you don't fight blight, we've heard it over and over again. And so this is our solution, is that we have a full-time person dedicated to that. Now, I say that because if we fund this position, I think you and I owe it to the citizens to prove that that's what we did with the money. And so, that's a big burden that we'll have to share, and if we fund this parks position, the parks better look better. Uh, we can't just, we can't raise the tax rate and not have anything to show for it, to Steve's point. I mean, Mr. Ward definitely is spot on there, you, you can't, you can't raise the rate and not show anything for it. And so, uh, that's where we're at. So, I think the, the, the reason we've asked you to do this workshop is so you can tell us, hey, um, we, we, we are firm, we're gonna stand with the, the no new revenue rate and we'll, we'll work it out, and, and I'll be honest with you, the two positions will have to go if we do that. Uh, that, that's the only way we can make this thing work. But if you're willing to go up on that rate, we can fund the proposed budget as we presented it to you. So, you're not adopting a rate tonight, you're setting a ceiling, you're saying this is as high as I'm gonna go. It will be in the paper that that is, uh, your proposed rate. So, uh, be aware, uh, that, that it will say a tax increase beside your name, uh, should you elect to do that tonight. So, um, that's what this is about, is, uh, getting councils feel, because, you know, at the end of the day, this is your rate, I, I don't have a vote. Um, and we wanna make sure that we have the budget you want.
That's why I asked the questions, I did, five years ago when I was running for city council, I pledged that I would not vote to go up on tax rate unless it was an emergency. And I think we can all look and see what happened on Wharton Street, and if you wanna flush your commute, I'd call that an emergency.
Correct.
And, uh, it, I think, I think y'all are, I think y'all have done it, I think y'all have done a good job too. I just wanna, I didn't wanna go up on the tax rate and add two jobs. You answered my questions and I appreciate it very much. So, I, I see the need for it, and I'm, I guess I'll bite the bullet and vote to go up on the tax rate and just say, I pledged I wouldn't do it unless it was an emergency, and I think this is an emergency.
One thing that I'd like to say is I, I, I commend you all for being able to do what you've done in the last four years, as everything else has gotten so much more expensive. But it's easy to commit to not raising taxes five years ago when you didn't think that inflation was gonna go where it was and everything is significantly more expensive. So, phenomenal job doing what you guys have done in that regard.
One, one, one comment I'll throw in there is the, uh, I guess what was very telling here is the, uh, the M and O rate and what, what has happened to that over the last, we've got inflation out the gizou right now, and, and we've got an M and O rate that's, that's below our levels of forever, pretty much. So it's interesting that, uh, so we've got some, you know, uh, I, I, I mean, I understand where you're at and what, what you, what you've got here, so. It's a, it's a challenge, but we've gotta, gotta meet the challenger.
I'm gonna leave it at this, it's what I told you from day one. This is your budget.
Yep.
You have to bring it to us and you have to tell us what you need to effectively and efficiently operate this city. I would disagree on the, the, the replacement of the sewer lines on Wharton Street and, uh, simply because they weren't in the plans.
No, they weren't.
The reason they got addressed is because of seventy years of, you know, meeting, it was, that was an emergency.
You, you are, you are absolutely right on that.
That's the only reason, I mean, so it's not to throw blame, it's the, but we've got, we have to start moving forward, as Mayor Bustamani said.
You're a hundred percent right on that. No, you're right.
But I'm gonna stick with this. I have to believe what you're presenting me is the budget, it is not my responsibility to go through it, I've shown you and I've shared with you my concerns. I think there needs to be more money for roads because we're getting further and further behind, and you're gonna, and I don't want us coming back saying, okay, we've got an emergency because there's a sinkhole someplace. We just, I think we're missing some spots on budgets, I agree with Mayor Protem Bar, uh, uh, I agree. The simply, there are things that we've had to accommodate because of inflation. But I'm, I'm, this is your budget.
We agree with you, Mr. Ward, after the conversation we had with you and the finance committee, and there were separate conversations, so we weren't violating any. We decided that, um, we should move the fifty thousand dollars in park shade structures to streets, cause you're a hundred percent right. We, we aren't spending enough money there, we had fifty thousand dollars in the budget for park straight shade structures. Uh, the finance committee was pretty clear that that's a want, not a need. Uh, and we agree, we're not getting anywhere on the streets, so we're asking for you to, we're proposing, this, this, these are the only changes that you're seeing in the budget from what we had online in July. And we're gonna walk you through everything, because last year, I don't think we did a great job of doing that, and so, this year we're walking. In the utility fund, when we came to set the, um, revisit the rates, uh, one of the things we noticed was we had sixty thousand for transfer switches. These are used for generators. We have found an alternative to that, and we'll no longer need the sixty thousand, it's a thirteen thousand dollar bypass uh, that is quite a bit, is reasonable, and we will do that this fiscal year to get ready for an emergency. So we pulled that out, we pulled out the engineering, because all of our projects right now, and we're stacked, we have plenty of work to do in the next year without additional engineering. Either our, either our engineering's included in our debt, or our engineering's included in your grants. And so we pulled that out now. Caveat that, you'll be seeing it again next year, we'll be putting it back in, so we're carrying it, but we did that to avoid, uh, rate shock, and then we adjusted the investment revenue, uh, in both funds, we held the investment revenue, uh, even though our investments are really paying off. Uh, for example, this year, in the general fund right now, you've earned around two hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars in investments. And we, we certainly didn't budget for that, and the same thing in the utility fund, uh, we're caring, we feel comfortable adjusting that, uh, which has led us to all of the, uh, utility rates that we are adjusting as well. So, you, you're not just looking at a, a potential tax increase, you're also looking at, unfortunately offsetting it, uh, the, the tax rate. The tax rate's unavoidable, the tax rate's a hundred percent attributable to the debt that you have recently issued. That is, it, the entire debt rate, uh, entire rate increase in utilities is paying for that debt for North and South Wharton Street. And you're right, Mr. Ward, those were not planned, uh, and so that, that, that hurt us, and we have to do a better job of planning for the future as you, you know, as we move forward to future budgets. If you wanna proceed to the next slide. These are the thing, I'll, I'll let you carry this one, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Um, she's pointing out what's changed since we were in front of you in June.
So we did receive the final property appraisal values at seven P M. on August the first. We received the final tax rate calculation worksheet on Monday, August the fifth. Our sales taxes dropped significantly in July and August, um, compared to last year, it was a hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars less. The new property values only went up point seven one percent, and our debt rate increased significantly. So, again, these were brought up at the last meeting, water rates, sewer rates, and the transportation user fees.
Brittany, I think, oh, yes, Mr. Ward.
What are you, what are you budgeting this, the sales tax at? What, what level, what dollar amount?
Um.
The, the current year that we've received or below?
The current year that we've rece, uh, well, as we're trending year-to-date, right at seven million.
Okay.
Right, it's just a hair under, isn't it?
I mean, we should see, I wouldn't say an uptick, we may be able to, with that new pipeline coming through, there should be, there should be some there, but is that really fair? Because, like I said, I, I look at this all the time, I, I'm afraid that, I'm afraid that this next year, we're gonna start seeing the effects, uh, the real effects of what inflation has done. It is really challenging for people to pay the, to pay the water bills, the electric bills, the food bills, and, and we have a, a population that it's not an affluent population. And I think there's a lot of struggle that's going on, and I, I, I can see where the sales tax may continue to decrease.
Yeah, that's, that's our fear, our fear too, and I think Mr. Hodges has pointed out the inflation before, and, um, our concern that that, at some point, we're starting to see that slough off, and, and we think that's what's happening now. So, uh, we didn't wanna bank on it, we could've, I think when we were building this budget, I know when we were building this budget in the spring, that we expected sales tax to hold. And so we thought we could offset that debt increase with sales tax, and that's why you'd be flush. And then, July and August happened. And all of a sudden, finance, uh, and myself aren't very comfortable, uh, ratcheting that number up, because then you, you won't be balanced. So that's, that's what happened there.
That's correct.
So, in-
We're good news.
Saturday's paper was the, uh, public notice for your first hearing, it's got all of the new rates. I just added in what the monthly change was and what it would be annually. So we're proposing a water base increase and a sewer base increase, as well as the volume per thousand gallons, everything over two thousand gallons. So your base rate includes two thousand gallons.
Why don't you contextualize that by showing them what that looks like compared to our neighbors?
Yeah, I'm getting there. And then, of course, transportation user fee is just up, uh, twenty-five cents. So this is what water use, or the water rates would be compared to surrounding cities. Um, and then if you look in the far two right columns, that would be the residential and commercial rate for just water for five thousand gallons of water. We still are a lot lower than everybody else around us, even going up with our proposed. Um, this would be the sewer amount. And then this would be combined for water and sewer. And again, that's based off of a five thousand gallons of usage. And I did talk to Wharton and confirm they are proposing a ten percent increase again this year across the board. And then your transportation user fee. And these were the... I didn't know if you had a question.
No, go ahead.
Sorry. Um, and then these again are the capital requests that you will see in the budget this year. Dump trucks that we probably will not receive until the end of the fiscal year or beginning of fiscal year twenty-six, just 'cause of turnaround. Um, Garrett's got some new ambulances.
Every three months.
Uh, these were finally trickling in, I think these were ordered well over a year ago. Um, police body cameras, parking lot repairs, uh, we've moved the parch, park shade structures fifty thousand to seal coating to use, and sanitary, the sanitary sewer replacements. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Sorry, can I ask a question, or is the, the council?
That's only him.
Well, you had a question?
I did, I, I wasn't sure, I didn't understand the, the transportation fee?
Transportation user fee.
What is that?
Um, it's a flat fee charged to commercial and residential customers that goes specifically for our street program, it can only be used on the streets.
I'm sorry, the transportation fee is only for the streets?
Correct. Those funds are only used towards streets projects in the streets department. They can't be used for offsetting positions or any other expenses, it's used for the streets only, it's a designated fund.
So you guys don't have like, uh, like for assistance for seniors who need transport to different, okay.
No.
I wasn't, I didn't understand, okay.
Moving on, Brittany.
That's it, that's all I have for you.
You finish quick.
I try.
I'm still hung up on the Z A D deal.
I know, I know.
I've looked at four different properties and everybody increased eight percent, six percent, seven percent, four percent, and across the board, it's seven tenths of a percent.
So, okay.
Because we're only looking for a hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars in the budget.
Yes.
That's it.
Okay, but when you and I increase, that's not new value.
It is a new value, it's not the value of last year, it's this year's value.
But it, that's what drops your tax rate every year is when our values go up.
No, he's, she, he's just referring to the eight eighty that, uh, Irene provided us, like, why is it only gone up to eight eighty?
Yeah, so, so we go from eight-
She'll, she'll show you.
Eighty-three to eight ninety.
Uh, yeah.
That's what I was trying to understand, they're-
I've, I sat with Cindy Hernandez.
Uh, you were there, you, that was the one that you blew up for, Mr. Hodges.
Hang on, it's, it's ju, I don't know, are you clicking or am I, I'm not clicking. I'm not pushing anything.
There you go.
There you go.
You remember how you did it, Kaylee?
Right there, at the top, the top, yeah, right there.
Yeah, cause that six sixty-one is the senior.
That's the senior, yeah, that's a, that's a dollar amount though, that's not a value.
Okay.
So, some of, some of the taxable value came off a net taxable value and moved into the senior collection. So you're seeing, some of, some of that, the reason it may not have gone up more than point seven one is some of those values came out of that net taxable and into the senior freeze.
You don't show twenty-one, twenty, and nineteen.
I can pull it.
Has it ever been seven tenths of a percent in an increase?
I haven't seen it.
I haven't seen it that low.
It's very low.
I don't want people having more value, listen, I'm not for anybody having. But I, you can take, you can take a sample from every district, just pick a house, see what it was last year.
I went up significantly.
See what it was this year.
Ours did too.
Eight percent, eleven percent, seven percent, four percent, seven cents of a point, I don't believe it.
It's in your schedule right here somewhere.
If I'm reading it, that's seven million dollars, and that includes new and the increased value of the houses.
You know, what if we increased five percent, does that change the entire talk that we just had, probably?
So, it will be in your council packet tonight, but that's where we're getting the, the number from. And that's what Hernandez is using, is the total number right there.
From C N.
But she does have, um, yeah.
Yeah.
I think this is another solar panel deal.
And we, I sat with Cindy Hernandez and went through all of these, because I, I questioned the same thing, how do we have so little? And even the new growth, I don't, I don't agree with that, and I've asked them to pull certain properties that we knew, that were new, that just rolled over.
It goes back to timing as well, goes back to timing of when some of these businesses-
Right.
As I've gotten older, my days run together, so I may forget.
Yeah, like construction stuff, I, I get that where it catches up.
Because you can see though, yeah, I, I'm with Blake, I agree, what does it look like, cause that's a hun, a hundred million dollars, you know, right, yeah. And you're saying only-
So I can, I can definitely pull back the Markle and send you.
This is what I, I would like, and if, and if, and me being the representative to that board, and I don't wanna create any more work.
No, I mean-
I want raw Excel data for the seventeen thousand properties here, this year, last year. Run up, do the formula, double click it, hit it all the way down and confirm that that's correct, cause if she, if, if the appraisal district's not providing that,
I will have to-
who are we to trust them after what we know?
After what we saw last year.
Especially considering that we're about to ask people perhaps that we're gonna increase rates, I mean, we know the county's going through this, and we know Judge Benrath's worked up. I don't, I don't, I don't, I hope that's right. But if it's not, it doesn't surprise me, and I would really like for them to export their data into an Excel file, that you could say, you know what? They're not wrong, and maybe- And maybe just take a ten-deal sample size. I mean, some people's taxes didn't go up, good for them, and I know that every two or three years, you know, different quadrants of the city get hit. If that's an anomaly over the last ten years, I think we need to ask, and I don't know what our repercussions are at this point, but.
I mean, the good news is, is you're not setting a tax rate tonight, we're just setting the ceiling.
Sure.
Yeah, but it will, unfortunately, you know, we, we need to warn you. It will read a tax increase in the notices.
I mean, so be it, but, again, I, I don't want to create any more work. If you said, hey, I agree with you, and you're good, fine. But if you pull back the last ten and everything ebbs and flows in three to six percent, where it's probably a little bit more stable, fifteen to twenty. I mean, prices went haywire, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two. As rates have climbed, it's starting to relax a little bit. Our housing market's getting a little stale, it's not as active as it was. Um, but I, you still think people are gonna get the price that they want as long as they're willing to keep, um, uh, the listing on the market long enough. I, I just, I don't know, I just.
I will try to get that from them.
I'll request it, I'll request it and copy you. What I'd like to do, though, is I'd like to send her an email and say, hey, for the last ten years, this is what it's been.
Okay.
All of a sudden.
I'll pull this, I'll provide this for you and go back further, and I'll also give you another person to copy in there.
Let's just see if we can find a trend, and we can ask them to double check and provide the data for us.
But if, if it goes up, I'm going back to what you were talking about next year. The effective rate is twenty-nine cents for M and O, right?
Correct.
If it goes up again, that, that number is going to have to decrease this year.
That's right. You're right.
So, we're gonna be working with less money in this budget.
Less money.
No, you're right on that.
If, if, if the value, if the existing value goes up, then the rate has to go down to generate the same amount of revenue, roughly. Yeah, yeah, so that's. Oh, no, no, that's right. Yeah, but your number will be lower next year, which could cause a problem with your budget for the following years. That's what Spinrath was talking about as well. I mean, those numbers could be, they could be accurate, just simply, things aren't, they're not just blowing and going, and we don't have all of this new, new growth going on here.
All right, we gotta move on.
That is all we have.
That is all we have. All right.
And close the meeting and open the next one. In seven minutes.
There's, that's, there's.
I tripped it, man, I tried, and tried, and tried.
At this time, we're gonna adjourn the, um, budget workshop. It's five fifty-three PM.